Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Family Meeting Act, Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and extent known the agenda of this meeting to Asbury Park Press, the New Coaster, and on January 14, 2022 via email. Copies of this notice has been placed at the Administration Billings to Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on January 14, 2022. The Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse evolving global society. Roll call, please.
Ms. Salisbury, Ms. Breach, Mr. Grillo, Mr. Lattaraca.
Here.
Mr. Remy. Ms. Ricks.
Here.
Mr. Saunders, Ms. Lozinski, Ms. Cook.
Please rise to the flag salute.
Good evening, everyone. So we're going to get started with the student presentations this evening first before we get into the work session and the reports from the committee. So we have a representative from Thurgood Marshall, Bradley Elementary, the Upper Elementary, I saw Ms. Hope, and the high school is all accountant present for. Okay, so we're going to start with our students. We're going to start with Bradley Elementary School and the principal, Ms. Theodore Jackson-Bayers. Upon coming up, oh, sorry, that's kind of loud. Would you please make your way to the orange tape so that we're all... Come and join us up at the orange tape as well.
Check. Good evening, everyone. At this time, it is my honor and pleasure to present the Bradley Elementary School October Student of the Month, none other than Ms. Elena Oxner. Give her a round of applause as she comes. Come on up. And I just want to say that Elena's teacher is here, and she just wanted to just say a couple of things about Elena. Give her a round of applause as she comes to the court. Like, two seconds. Alana, I'm sorry, Alana, I'm sorry.
Good evening, how is everybody? This is my student, Alana, and she has made a very great transition into third grade thus far. She has been exemplary in terms of her work, the character traits that she brings to the table, leadership skills, working very hard, diligent worker, excellent work habits. She is also part of our Each One Teach One program where I send her out, she goes on a job Wednesdays and Thursdays where we partnership with another class, and she helps work with their skills as well as she improves her own. So she has been working hard, and I trust that she will continue in that way, and she just has a big heart, and it's almost like our class mom, and helps everyone out. So I'm very, very proud of her.
So, Alana, we have a couple of things for you. Alana, we have a couple of things for you. We have you, of course, we have to give you some official... Hold on one second. This is for you, Alana, we have some Bradley spirit wear. So we have you, so you have an official Bradley Elementary School polo shirt because you know we are in uniform, and then on... Also, we could not, this could not be possible without Alana's mom and dad. So we have some spirit wear for you. Would you please wear this with pride and say, "Which school did your child go to? Bradley Elementary." Would you do that?
I can admit it, too.
Oh. Nice, very nice. And mom, we have to give you special flowers because without you, thank you for blessing us with this little angel right here. So we have to give you your flowers.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So this is all for y'all.
Thank you.
We got sweatshirt hoodies, look. Sweatshirt hoodies, everything drip up for y'all.
Thank you, thank you. We got the drip.
We have the Bradley drip. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson-Bayers, for that presentation. Next up, we're going to have MLK, Ms. Hope is going to be presenting here for Mr. Perry Medina.
Thanks, boss. It is with great honor and pleasure from MLK Upper Elementary on the behalf of the staff and Mr. Medina to present the Student of the Month, the most beautiful child inside and out, Zarai Small. Please come on up. Come over here, Mama. Just wanted to say something small from Mr. Medina and from Ms. Mills. Mom, you want to come up here and take a picture as well? I've known Zarai for the past few years during our pandemic through the last, I guess, fourth grade, now fifth grade. You are definitely a leader amongst your peers in your class. I see you walk in the hallway, and you know I'm going to cry. You are a breath of fresh air. You're always kind, you're always respectful. You are the most amazing child inside and out. And mom, I love your child, and you did a wonderful job keeping who you are. We love you from Ms. Philhauer, myself, and the staff and their teachers.
You missed it.
Look, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hope. Next, we'll have the high school, Ms. O'Neal, Principal O'Neal. Are your students here? Okay, so we'll hold off on those. We'll have Thurgood Marshall, Principal Dr. Schultz.
Thank you. And I've asked Ivy to come up.
Good evening, everyone. I am delighted and excited to introduce our Student of the Month from the Thurgood Marshall Elementary School, Ms. Juliana Lopez Ortiz. Juliana, please come up.
Mom and dad, too.
And Juliana is not only a ray of sunshine in our school, a dedicated, loving student. She does great things in her first grade class, but for the first time in Thurgood Marshall Elementary School history, Juliana was also nominated by several other teachers in the preschool grade level for her willingness and dedication to each morning assist with helping her brother who attends our school right there with safely getting to his classroom and his classmates as well. So Juliana, we appreciate you, and mom and dad, thank you. And in truth, thurgood fashion, a bookbag filled with some of your favorite things that we talked about today. Congratulations, Juliana.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, for translation. We're going to hold off on our high school until those students arrive. Okay, they're not coming tonight. So would you still want to come up and recognize those students? Thank you.
Thank you. Both of our students are being recognized at our school clapout tomorrow. One is at an athletic event today, and the other is preparing for her law adventure competition. For seventh and eighth grade, we are recognizing Ingrid Gonzalez. Our Students of the Month this month are positive role models who are doing a lot to help our general student community. She has been helpful to two new students navigating their schedule, helping them learn and even make friends by sitting with them at lunches. So congratulations to Ingrid. Our high school student is Mariana Rojas Torres. Similarly, is someone who just would be defined as being kind and caring. She is always willing to help, especially teachers and staff. She will step up and help out with anything that we need her to do. She's also an excellent student who has near-perfect attendance for this school year, so congratulating her as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. And parents, if you want a recap of today, APTV, and you're welcome to leave if you want.
All right, we're going to start with our committee reports. Dom?
Thank you. The Finance Committee met on November 10th. With regard to the Budget Stabilization Aid, this was the extra aid that the district applied for in late summer. Met with the county superintendent, the county business administrator to discuss projections for the 2024 budget and the status of our stabilization aid application. The county office believes aid will be awarded, but there were quite a few applications, so our award may be less than what we put in for, in which case we will scale back, we will do the projects, but scale back the degree to which we can get them done. We also have our state CUSAC self-assessment. The district will file its self-assessment and meet the deadline. The county office does a review in spring 2023. The annual financial report, the audit team is on site conducting a review of the financial reports. The district will meet the deadline for filing on December 5th. If there's any delay, as it was last year, sometimes it's due to the state not providing the necessary information to our district and to many others, so then there would be an extension. With regard to the ESER funds, work is progressing. Work will begin shortly, which the HVAC upgrades to the upper elementary school. The contractor will begin replacement ductwork before moving to the replacement of classroom unit ventilators. Work is also beginning at Bradley Elementary School with the replacement of unit ventilators in all classrooms. We were, I think it was Bradley, we were a little concerned about a delay with regard to a large piece of equipment. The district did an excellent job with the architect of kind of switching around how the work would be done so that we can still meet our deadlines under the grant and deal with the supply chain issue for the equipment. Upgrade to the elevator, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Upper Elementary, will begin January 3rd. The completion date has now been moved up to the end of March, but the elevator will be out of service while they're upgrading that portion of the project. There was a walkthrough for central office relocation, the future use of Barack Obama. The district gave a heads up. I was out of town, I think Mr. Grillo and maybe others weren't, but did we have some go that, do you want to, and Ms. Ricks, you guys want to jump in?
We did take a walkthrough, the first floor of Obama. Went through several of the offices and the layout that's going to happen, and there's plenty of room. I think it'll be a nice move, and it would be good to see people back in that building.
Just impressed by the setup. It was a lot to take in, but having worked in that building, I love the fact that the building is going to be utilized again.
And after that review now, estimated costs will be presented in the near future. And just under the other category, there was a city inspection of the high school chairlift. Committee received updates on other projects such as panic bars on exit doors, receipt of additional security cameras, and a request for quotes for a backup generator at the Information Technology Center. And that was finance, which I think then everything was covered in buildings and grounds.
Pretty much, yeah. Where it's finance and buildings and grounds kind of met together. The only other thing I see is, Jeff, wasn't there a facility use request that we were going to discuss?
Yes, that's on the addenda. It's on the C6, item one. That was presented after the committee met and the notes were taken. That's for a Friendsgiving event that'll take place, I believe, at Thurgood on Saturday afternoon, evening.
Right, that's Kiwanis that's doing that, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the only other thing I have under other is that the committee also discussed the grant received by Aaron Williams that's to be utilized to repair the tennis courts. And the committee reviewed various issues associated with the existing courts at the high school, Obama School, and the basketball courts behind the high school. I think we were asking about kind of moving that along since this is money that needs to be spent, I think, by the county, because it was awarded by the county to the Asbury Park Tennis Initiative. And there's a sunset date on the grant, right?
Well, yes, which is the end of January 2023. So I think it's critical that the attorneys get involved to put together language that could meet that requirement and the money's not lost moving forward.
And just so the board's aware, at this time, we've not been asked to do anything with the grant, and there are issues with regard to how the repairs, if they are to be made, are made, and the funding. Again, the concern is that we comply with New Jersey's public contracting laws, and that's all I'll say about it at this point. But it was my understanding that the issue was previously tabled. So to the extent that anything, that the board would like anything done on that, given Mr. Lattaraca, the date that you indicated is rapidly approaching, that's something that needs to be addressed rather quickly if it's to be addressed.
I would just like more clarity on where you intend to put the tennis court. Whoever is intending to put the tennis court there.
Ms. Ricks, again, that still has to be determined. The tennis initiative is, yes, a community initiative, and I think we've taken that conversation up at previous board meetings. Again, we don't have a tennis team here.
Right.
And so we utilize and offer the shared space of this community to the city in various forms and opportunities at no cost to taxpayers in utilizing school district facilities. Although it may be unfortunate that the tennis initiative has a sunset date on those funds, there's still a lot of clarity around the legality related to the land at the high school, potentially the basketball court, what that's going to take, the upkeep of that. So there are a lot of things that are, and environmental concerns that are still yet pressing with that. And I understand that the tennis initiative has their due date and their sunset date on that. However, as a district and as the representative of the district, I have to be very mindful of how is that going to impact our students? How is that going to benefit our students? Right? Because it is, will be on school property. It will be, for me and for its usage, should be looking for the benefit of the students of Asbury Park School District. And I understand that. I mean, we have limited, if any, green space in this city, unfortunately. However, we still have all of those other issues related to the environmental concerns as well as those other responsibilities that relate to the tennis initiative.
I just wanted to add something. It'd probably be best to have the board attorney talk to, I guess they have a representative...
They have an attorney.
Yeah, and see, you know, if they understand all of the things that need to be done, and if there's a way that the funds can, the deadline can be extended, because I think in some cases that that can happen so that it's not lost.
So I did have that conversation with them several months ago, and was very clear on the push to meet their deadline, but still we had to be very cognizant of the purpose as well as the environmental concerns with those various spaces. And so we've been very clear in communicating with their representatives, with their legal side from our side, just on those things. And so also with the new board coming on, those things were also tabled until the new board was able to be seated, but still having those conversations with their legal representatives to be very clear.
It might be a good idea then by the regular board meeting of January, which would, it would be after the organizational meeting, and maybe we can have an update as to if there's something that can be done and the board wants to do that, that we could have that ready by the end of January so that we can discuss it.
And just so that we're clear, the only thing that I've been presented with is, I think it was an email from their attorney that basically said, "We have these funds, they need to be used quickly, let's move." I've never seen a plan, a proposal, specs, nothing. And so, you know, while we can review it legally, there really is nothing that's been presented to me to review, other than, "We have this money, we want to make tennis courts, and let's do this quickly."
Okay, I'm getting concerned that the discussion is coming up with 84 different reasons to do nothing. Let me be clear about what I'm requesting, that we would move whereby there would be a discussion with these individuals who are offering $350,000 to our facilities that, as I understand it in term, if it were the basketball courts, that have been in disrepair for 18 years currently. All I'm saying is have the conversations that the new board can clearly pass a resolution that would meet the requirements that the money's not lost. It doesn't mean you're accepting a proposal, turning down a proposal. What you're doing is trying to keep $350,000 on the table to better improve both the district, the kids, and if we so choose to allow community use, community use, and that could be addressed with how to raise additional funds for community use. That's all I'm asking.
And I don't disagree with that, Mr. Lattaraca. The only thing I would say is that I would just need a plan, other than, "I have $350,000, and we want to use it for tennis." That's literally where I am right now. I don't have anything more than that from the tennis initiative.
Yeah. I don't have a lot of information, but what I do know is that property should be utilized for our students. Now, is that tennis court that you're proposing, is that going to be just for our student or is it students, or is it for the community? And the second thing is if we have a basketball court that's in disrepair, then we should try to repair that court for our kids, because we often talk about our kids are in the street. So if we have a basketball courts and our kids, we all know our kids love pickup basketball games. My preference would be to refurbish the basketball court so our kids could be someplace else other than in the streets. That's my concern. If you can answer to me, is that tennis court is for the community or for the kids?
I would imagine it's, since it is federal funds, it would have to be a joint, you know, usage, similar to what the city did with the... No, that's not how it's done? That's what I would imagine.
That's what I'm talking about. I have no clarity.
And that's why I'm saying, you don't have to agree to anything as to what the proposal would be, who would use it beyond our students using it. All you have to do is say, "We're going to make best efforts to look at and evaluate whether tennis courts where in a city where there is no public recreational space other than school district space currently, that we will look at this proposal and commit to have details and either jointly put together a proposal, ask them for a proposal, whatever you want to do." I'm just, I just don't think it's a tenable position to say, "Thanks for your offer for $350,000, but you're bothering me."
Just to follow up with Ms. Ricks with the basketball court situation, I remember a proposal, like I mentioned the basketball courts a few times, and I remember a proposal from Charity Kings when they mentioned that they would raise funds and, you know, do the upkeep with our fields and all the buildings and grounds. And I don't know what happened with that. Like, it never got pushed, and we never talked about it again. Like, I just felt as though we were just pushed to the back burner type of thing. So if another organization wants to assist again, I think we need to really, you know, do something. Like, if they're willing to help and it's not costing us any money, why not? Why not push it forward? It's going to benefit the kids, it's going to benefit the community overall. That's just my piece on that.
Just would like more information, more clarity, and my preference is for the kids' use, not for the community's use. I would like to see our kids off the streets, I'd like to see the basketball court refurbished, and if we can do a tennis court, fine. But as Dr. Adam just said, we don't even have a tennis team. Our kids aren't even showing any interest in tennis.
We got a basketball team.
We have a basketball team, yes, we do, and that's what they show interest in.
A lot of kids that love basketball, too. Something got to give. My fault to cut you off, Ms. Ricks.
All right, Jesse, with your report, please.
The curriculum and instruction committee met last Tuesday. We discussed a few items, one being Stop It, which will provide school district with an anonymous reporting system and social and emotional learning resources to help create safer, healthier school communities. They will offer leading, anonymous reporting with, will cover crisis, text line, and on-demand wellness training center to school districts funding through a grant. Now, as I understand this, anyone can do some anonymous reporting if they see something that's going on, and they won't have to fear being pointed out or determining who made the anonymous call. We also discussed that Director of Special Services, Mrs. Lau, to pay membership for her to be a part of the New Jersey Association of Public Service Administrators, and that will cost the district $2,500. And the Stop It is not going to cost us anything, that's through a grant. We also discussed... We also discussed that the Zeta Epsilon Labata Chapter of Alpha Phi Alpha, uh, continues partnership with the Thurgood Marshall School, um, mentoring program that will meet once a week throughout the school year. We, uh, there is a grant in the amount of ten thousand dollars that run from September twenty twenty-three through June twenty twenty-four, um, for Project Lead, the Lock, the, Project Lead the Way Lockheed Martin Engineering Program Expansion Grant. This grant will help our allied health and engineering student. The grant, as I said, uh, is ten thousand dollars, and that will be at no cost to the district. We also discussed school trips, and, um, that's about it. I don't know, uh, Dr. Howard, did I miss anything?
Yes, the Empower Grant, um, we're in year two of the Empower Grant from the Department of Health and Human Services, where the schools establish a wellness team. This is year two. Last year, they did the survey with the staff and the students, and it was established that the issues with wellness in the high school had to do with, um, with the culture and climate, and so last year was just a planning phase. This year, they're going to implement different strategies, they're going to, um, create a committee that consists of, um, student services, teachers, and parents, and they will come up with activities that will help to improve the culture and climate in the building. That was from student services. Thank you.
We did discuss that, but we also, the committee, CNI Committee requested more information because, as you know, each time we request information, we are getting differing information. So we would like more consistent information, uh, to understand the process.
I believe I sent Mr. Ruiz, um, the information from the MLK. It was requested that you get information from the same grant that was done at MLK. I, I sent that to Mr. Ruiz. From what I understand, it was sent out to the CNI Committee.
Uh, yes, we did get it, but we haven't enough, have enough time to go over it. We got it, I think, uh, yesterday late, I believe. Yeah, late, so the committee hasn't had an opportunity to discuss it or look over it either.
I just want to say, this is a grant from the state, so it's not going to cost the district anything. It's a, it's a grant.
I understand.
Okay.
Is there an expiration on, on the grant, that we have to accept it by a certain...
It was supposed to be, uh, accepted last month, but they gave us an extension for another month. So I don't know what's going to happen if we don't...
How long's the extension for?
We were, for this month.
Actually, we haven't even used any money from the grant. We had the school district apparently...
No, we haven't used anything. We can't, we can't move forward with it unless it's approved.
Is it on the agenda?
Yeah, it's, what it is, is a, uh, a stipend for the person that's running it, you know? And then we have to match a certain amount, I believe, we're supposed to.
No, you know, it doesn't cost the district anything.
I know we haven't, but it, in, in the grant explanation, it said there was some kind of match or something, I don't...
Right, there can be, yes, there can be, but when, um, we discussed that the CNI Committee, if that was going to be an issue, I went back to them and they said that we don't have to contribute anything. So the district, it's no cost at all.
Shadine, policy?
Sorry. Um, at this present time, there's no current information from policy.
Policy Committee usually meets and reacts to updates from Strauss S.M., and there were no updates.
Oh, no. Uh, Madam President, can we just...
Pardon your interruption, we do have our student representative, Sarah. Um, are you here? Sarah, you want to come and take a seat next to, um, Mr. Remy, um, to do your student update? Thank you. As you know, as she gets settled, each month, we have a student representative on the board. We alternate between two students. Um, last month, we had another, um, student who was our student representative. This is Sarah's second month, uh, I'm presenting. She is also part of our student advisory committee, um, and other, um, activities at the high school. So, welcome, Sarah. Um, you can give your report.
Hi, good afternoon. Um, so, I'm going to start with... Uh, I think everyone knows what happened this morning at the Asbury Park High School with the situation of a potential threat and all of that. So I'm going to start with, after the unsettling morning, all of Asbury Park High School experience, I can truly say that we were fortunate to have the support of the Asbury Park Police Department and our staff. As for this month's report, I'm happy to say that we've been doing well. The breakfast could always include more varieties, and I'm sure the students would appreciate that. And also, I'd like to put my input on the, on the situation with the basketball courts. I, um, I concur with the further usage and repurposing of the basketball courts, um, which is another concern that I had was for the support of all of our athletic extracurriculars. Uh, sports like basketball as well as football and soccer provide a way of escape for our students, um, like situations at home, all of that. Sports is a really important thing that I see, and it's part of our culture at Asbury Park High School. So I think that with the support of all of the school board on the sports, I think that would be something that the students would really appreciate, um, like improving their material, their, like, per se, like, just equipment in general. And also, like, situations like what happened today is something that students, um, well, since it was a serious thing, um, I had a comment from a teacher saying that they were actually nervous for the first time in eighteen years that they've been, um, as a teacher. They were genuinely nervous. So I think that also impacts our students. So I think having more transparent conversations with situations like these, since it's happening all over the country, is something important. But, um, other than that, that's pretty much it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. As Sarah indicated, um, we had an incident today, uh, which was an outside, um, concern that the Asbury Park Police Department notified us. Um, all systems that we have in place in terms of notification from the police department to the district, uh, to the school being locked down, to following up with not only the leadership at the police department, to the county office, uh, all worked effectively, um, in terms of just also communicating out in terms of robo-calls to parents, um, as well as our, um, security procedures going from a lockdown to a modified lockdown, uh, were all effectively executed. Uh, we do have Officer Young here, so I want to recognize him, who was part of that, um, that security force, um, as well as our, uh, in-building, as well as Ms. O'Neal and the principal of the high school. So, um, Sarah is correct, um, in terms of us being cognizant of the trigger effect of situations like that on our students and staff, uh, because it is a natural phenomenon. Um, it is something that goes on, um, and we're lucky that our procedures, um, were enacted, and we had a number of the, uh, police from Asbury Park who stayed around, um, to ensure the safety of our students, um, as well as the potential threat, and then communicated that to us in terms of what was credible, um, and where we would proceed with our other schools as well, um, just in case there was, uh, a potential of anything spreading from where the initial, um, threat was made. So, um, everything worked as it should have. Um, could we settle fears and concerns and triggers? No, we can't, uh, but what we can control, we did control, and again, that was at the partnership of the district as well as the Asbury Park Police Department.
I just want to quickly with the board, just go over, when you get a chance, to go over the, um, action plan I provided that, for district goal number one, I mean, uh, board goal number one, that, um, to go over it. I know there's two other goals that have to have action plans, so I don't know if there's anybody volunteering or going, volunteering? Or are you going to assign, uh, some people to work for, work on it? So if there's any questions or any updates to it or corrections, we can go over it in the next board meeting? And all the, the board goals are on the agenda, the A agenda, uh, this month also.
All right, now we're going to move into public participation, but before we do, I have a statement to read. In accordance with Board Policy 0167, the Asbury Park Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance, and provides members of the public with the opportunity to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The public comment portion of the meeting is not a question-and-answer session, and all public comments shall be directed to the board president. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the president and provide his or her name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable. All public comments shall be directed to the board president and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules and/or interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed from the meeting.
At this time? At this time, I open up public participation?
Hi, Debbie Lorenz, I'm the squeaky wheel. Um, you guys know me. I live in Asbury Park. My son goes to school at, in seventh grade in Asbury Park High School. Um, I know that it's currently on the agenda, but I knew ahead of time that my son's one-to-one is resigning. He has resigned, he is no longer there, he will not be returning to his post. So I want to make sure that we get his position posted as soon as possible. I also want to thank the team for the seventh and eighth grade for making sure that my son is covered every day. I know that he has had someone with him, um, so I appreciate that, not just for his, uh, special needs, but because he is also diabetic and his blood could drop at any time, so that is a big concern of mine. Um, I came to the special meeting last time and didn't realize that the important, not that you aren't important, but that the important side wasn't going to be here. Um, I wanted to mention that the, um, the skills program that we're trying to get in place in the high school, the room that they are in, I went to see for back-to-school night, it needs running water desperately. I don't know if it ever had running water. I appreciate that it's in a bigger room than the one that I saw over the summer, however, it needs running water. I know that they're buttering bagels and doing activities where the kids need to wash utensils, they are carrying them down the hall to do this. Um, so this is a concern of mine. I also know that it's a carpeted room. Um, the teacher did make a comment about the carpeted room, but I thought the same thing, like, they can't learn to sweep, um, there's not a vacuum there, so they're not vacuuming, and it's food that they're working with, so there are crumbs and there are things that are of concern to me. Um, so the special skills, obviously, we want to keep working on the life skills program. I appreciate that we're doing that. We didn't take any trips like I hope we would. I hear the word trips, I heard somebody say it today, so I'm really hoping that we do do some things like that for the spring. Uh, one more thing that I heard tonight, the tennis court. I have a great idea. Why don't you suggest to this tennis committee a versa court? If you look it up, it is a combination of basketball and tennis. Um, they could kill two birds with one stone. If you can convince this committee to bend the rule a little bit and make it a dual, a dual-purpose court, then you can make everybody happy. You'll have two different things to serve to the community, and it'll be a first-come, first-served basis. Whoever gets there first gets to play the sport of their choice. Just a thought.
Good evening, my name is Nina Summerlin, I reside at eleven oh one Bangs Avenue. Madam President, I have a question for you, and if you can get back to me with an answer, I really would greatly appreciate this. I have volunteered and offered to train any school who wanted to do a parent-teacher organization in their school. I'm willing to come in and train those parents free of charge. This way, the PTO can actually be productive, you have parental involvement in your district. But I have a concern now, because now I'm hearing other things in regards to, not everybody really wants parental involvement, but you want a parent academy. A parent academy, and I'll educate everybody while I'm standing here, so when you leave tonight, nobody has any misunderstandings of how this process works. But a PTO and a parent academy is two different totally things. A parent academy is, is based out of Title I, and that's actually to get parents to come in, do training, do workshops, do whatever the district wants to actually provide for those parents. A PTO is where parents come into your schools, where their children attend, and they give their services, they offer their opportunities to assist with, at whatever the school needs to be done, whether it's volunteering or anything else. Superintendent, I had a conversation with you, and it dawned on me some of the things that you were saying in regards to parental involvement. Let me correct you so you understand moving forward. If you're asking parents to come into their building and volunteer, and you don't cover these parents with, through your insurance, that's a lawsuit on that parent, not the school district. So that is against the law, just so you know. Your PTOs are actually ran as nonprofit organizations, which means they pay for their own insurance, they pay for their own tax ID information to, in order for them to become an official nonprofit business in this district. So if you're asking parents to come in and volunteer in your school district, you better make sure that they're on a PTO and they have reg, their own insurance to be covered, because if a parent comes in this building and they volunteer, and a child gets hurt under their supervision, that parent can be sued by somebody within this district that they're shot, they're watching their kid. The district is not going to cover those parents if they come into the building to volunteer, whether it's for an event that the school is doing or anything else. So a PTO has to be ran as an official nonprofit organization, not as a parent academy. I have an issue because of the fact that when you're asking parents to get involved in this district, there's no, not one person sitting on that panel can tell a parent that you can't have a PTO in your school, because it is against the law. There are state laws that are put in place. The district might not agree that there is parental involvement in this district, and there's no policy in your book regarding PTOs in this school district. Everything that's in the book now in regards to policy is based on Title I and Title I only. So I'm asking you to verify with all your schools in regards to getting parental involvement in their buildings, with no issues of saying it has to be a parent academy, because it's against the law. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Well, it's evening, right? Good evening. Sheila Brazil, twelve hundred Jeffries Street, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Also to piggyback, Ms. Summerlin, from, I know this, been a long time, me as an ex-board member, exit. Uh, you have to have, do a background check for, any parent coming to the building, or any person coming to the building, do you have to have a background check? So, is the district going to be, pay for the background check, because it is a cost? I'm here, um, talk about, when new people come to the district, can we start having like a town hall meeting? So, parents, community, students, staff can get to know these new, meet these new people that's coming in, you have a new principal at the high school. My, I know my daughter's no longer there, but I'm still a parent in this district, and that's a former nineteen ninety-eighty-two graduate from Asbury Park High School, so I would like to get to, you know, us to know new principal, make her feel comfortable or welcome. Um, the, about the, we had tennis back in nineteen eighty-two when we was in school, kids don't do that. Kids don't do that these days. So I think tennis will really not be a good idea. It is a good idea, but not really a good idea. But at the same time, are you going to charge people to use this tennis court? Because if somebody want to use football field, you charge them. Because, for example, my nephew wanted to use it, play semi-pro football, but they wanted to charge him $1,200 in fees. So, you know, if you're going to charge one person, for good folk, the goose is good for the gander. And then my other, last thing, Title I. Title I, Title I, Title I, parental involvement policy. That policy has not been updated since 2011. It's supposed to be updated every year in October. It has to be signed off on by a parent. And Title I is, 1% of whatever money that comes into the district from the government should be set aside for parents, for training. But that haven't happened. We used to have like a, when, after Dr. Low left, when Mr. Lurk, we had some conferences during the summertime. But Title I, parents used to go outside to like different states for the Title I conference was, to get education and to bring back, and to, you know, latch kid to our parents that was here. So hopefully, you know, we can get this policy going. Because you also had a Parent Advisory Council under the Title I environment. So, but I think that policy need to be updated. If you don't know what it is, I have a copy at home. I had to dig for it, but at the next board meeting, I could bring it to you and pass it out to you. I know I forgot something, so I assume this will be continued. Have a good night.
Sheila, do you have the policy number real quick?
I'm not wanting to see. I know, but I don't know if it was a 104 or point something, but I have it at home.
Was it Title I policy you're speaking of?
The parental involvement policy for Title I for parents. But I have to dig it. I know I have it, because if I had my son's stuff that he had from May first grade, I know I had a policy.
I'll find it.
Go into, you know, my archive and dig it out. So, but I have it next board meeting.
It's 2415.04.
Good evening. I'm Mrs. Bray. I just want, I'm a resident of Asbury Park. I just want to say this before I forget. Everybody is quick to say what the kids aren't into and all this other stuff, but how do you know if you don't give them a chance or proposal? Like, I didn't know my daughter liked soccer. She loved it. But I wouldn't think that she does. You're not giving them an opportunity. I feel like every time that there is a tool that these children need to be provided for, there's always a blockage. But then you have all these stones and crutches that you're giving them. That's why I'm always totally confused about your mission statement that talk about success. What, what success are you really providing for these children when you're always knocking something down? Now, I want to talk about this morning. Normally, there is a mass text message or whatever that goes on to the parents about a lockdown situation. My thing is, if you found out at 8:07 this morning, children go to school at different times. Don't you think less is best? You traumatize my five-year-old cousin. She was the only one on the van outside of the school, like outside. Don't you think being inside the building is more protecting her than a vehicle? Are you guys having bulletproof vans and school buses? She was traumatized, and they didn't even pick her up till 8:30. So I'm figuring, if you already knew this at 8:07, I didn't get a text message. I got a, I got a phone call, and then it was on Facebook. So it's parents that didn't even know. I feel like a lot of times you are lax on communicating with parents. Like, you just take over a parent's position. You don't, you're notch-a-lan about the communication. You do it when you feel like it. I just feel like totally disrespected as a parent. Because at the end of the day, if something goes wrong or anything is good, the burden lies on the parent, not you. You're quick to pick up the phone because you don't want to take accountability and responsibility, but you'll be like, oh, well, we hate to inform you, or you can have another kid, or, like-- I don't really understand what you guys are doing, but all the time I come here and I see you, you're dressed in your finest, your hair is done, you're bickering about money, about stupid stuff. When are you really going to help these kids? They're losing people. They've gone through a lot. You already see what they're living through. Why can't you give these kids an outlet in school? I don't even trust y'all.
Good evening. Eric Schneider, 658 Denise Court, Brick, New Jersey. Brick Township, sorry. Once again, I find myself speaking on behalf of the students of Asbury Park. As the middle school wrestling coach, I want to stress the importance of having at least two coaches for every sport. I just left practice about an hour ago, and as of today, I have 37 student athletes participating in wrestling. Now, to put that into some perspective for you, the football team had 33 players and had nine coaches. As I have already stated here a year ago, wrestling is a contact sport, and injuries occur often. For safety purposes alone, coaches at every level should have two coaches. In the case of an emergency, one coach would have to accompany an injured athlete to the hospital, while the other would remain with the remaining students, either at the site or on the bus. My hope for the students is that this issue gets rectified soon. Thank you.
At this time, we'll close public participation.
In the lieu of interest of time, what we're going to do is recognize the staff that are here for the seven o'clock hour due to the fact that we're not sure how long the executive session is going to last. So we do have some presentations for staff from last year, the New Jersey Governor's Teacher of the Year presentations. And so I would like to begin those presentations. Do we have, just roll call, let's see if everyone's here. Ms. Tiara Hamilton. Hey, Ms. Hamilton. I know Ms. Andrews is not here. So the principal, Dr. Schultz, will receive. Ms. Marilyn Lizier-Boston. Okay. Ms. Shelley Sanders. Thank you, Ms. Jackson Byers, but please hold your applause. Ms. Anna Santiago Gonzalez. All right, very good, Ms. Gonzalez. And Ms. Adonis Snyder. Okay, so we're going to do those presentations. So I do have them over here. So I would start with Dr. Schultz. You want to come up to the microphone and just call me, and I'll grab the--
I'm going to bring the box. No, no, no. So we have two presentations. Both? But I want to do the Teacher of the Year.
On behalf of Thurgood Marshall Elementary School, we'd like to call up our Teacher of the Year for last year's Governor/Educator of the Year program, the wonderful Ms. Tiara Hamilton. Yay! And on behalf of Ms. Andrews, she had a family commitment that she needed to attend. She is our dynamic instructional coach, who was our Educational Support Staff of the Year for last year. So congratulations, Ms. Andrews.
Thank you. Oh, you want to say, just slide over so we can get one picture? Ms. Jackson Byers?
At this time, it is my pleasure to present to Ms. Shelley Sanders. She was our Teacher of the Year for Bradley Elementary School. Give her a round of applause. The illustrious. And the Support Person of the Year was Ms. Anna Santiago, also known as Tiny Tim.
Okay. We have, Ms. Snyder, which-- Okay, okay. So I'm going to call you up individually, if you don't mind. I'm going to call up Mrs. Snyder, who is our Teacher of the Year for MLK, and Ms. Lizier-Boston, who is also our Support Service for MLK. Okay, all right. So, going to get one picture? Okay. Ms. Hope, slide around or come in closer?
Yes.
Thank you. And our Staff Members of the Month. Excuse me. Yes. Ms. O'Neil?
Good evening, everyone. This evening, we are recognizing Ms. DiMarsico, one of our English teachers, as our Teacher of the Month. Not only is Ms. DiMarsico an outstanding member of our community at the high school, but she is a teacher who takes on all of the extras. She is known to be our go-to for home instruction. She's our 12th grade advisor, and she's all-around a mom to most of our students in the school. So thank you for all you do for everyone, and congratulations.
Put inside there the certificate. Okay? You can get in the middle.
Thank you. Ms. Hope, are you coming up to do the presentation for the Staff Member of the Month?
Oh, yeah, come up here. Hello, everyone. I'm standing in for Mr. Medina tonight. On behalf of MLK Upper Elementary, we are proud to announce our, our teacher, our Staff Member of the Month. I'm so sorry. Nurse Beebe. Where are you? Yay! I want to just say a little word from Mr. Medina. Come over here. Nurse Beebe's work ethic, your positive spirit, have been a major catalyst in the successful care of health of our students. Your attentiveness, your drive to see things through have created an outstanding nurse's office plus center. Confidence in Beebe could not be any higher. We are fortunate and proud to have her as our nurse. Thank you, Ms. Queen, for all that you have done and all that you are and all that you have given. That's for Mr. Medina. Congratulations, Medina. Okay.
Thank you. Congratulations. Ms. Jackson Byers?
On behalf of the Bradley Elementary School, it is my proud pleasure to wish and say congratulations to Mrs. Kim Evans, our Bradley Elementary School October Staff Member of the Month. The staff has spoken, what they say, the people have spoken. The staff have voted for Ms. Kim Evans for her hard work and ethic. We love you, Mama Kim, and thank you for everything that you do. I think her bodies are here, but here you go.
Oh, you forgot to give--
Pass your certificate.
And last, but certainly not least, Dr. Schultz for Thurgood Marshall Elementary.
Yes, I'm going to be the long-winded one tonight. Yes. On behalf of the Thurgood Marshall Elementary School family, I am so excited and delighted to honor Ms. Sandy Burns, one of our early childhood float teachers, as this month's Staff of the Month. And I have, directly from her colleagues herself, who nominated her, their words as they speak to the true educator Sandy is. Sandy has worked so hard to cover, support, and help transform our pre-K classrooms during staff absences. She comes to work every day with smile and determination that is admirable. Students have responded well and progressed tremendously during this time. She goes above and beyond this school year to support teachers and students. She has changed the scope of her position to accommodate the needs of a classroom. She continues to show what a true educational leader she is with a smile every day. The school year would not run as smoothly without her a part of our team. She ensures classrooms are covered and in ratios at all times, assists staffs with students, supplies, and finds solutions to any questions staff may have. So Ms. Sandy Burns, please come up and accept this well-deserved award. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. So on behalf of all of the staff who've nominated the, their colleagues, on behalf of the administrators and the students that you serve, we thank you for all of your work, your dedication to the district, and all that you do every day to continue to provide for our students here.
Yes. Good evening again. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and extent known. Agenda of this meeting to Asbury Park Press, the new call start on January 14, 2022 via email. Copies of this notice has been placed at the Administration Billington Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on January 14, 2022. The Asbury Park School District will provide all students with comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society. Roll call, please.
Salisbury. Ms. Breach. Mr. Grillo. Mr. Lotaraca. Mr. Remy. Ms. Ricks. Mr. Saunders. Ms. Lozinski. Ms. Cook. Thank you.
Please rise to the flag salute. So whereas the Open Public Meeting Act allows for exclusion from discussion at the public portion of the meeting of certain matters as outlined below, whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education was to discuss such matters made and will make discussion-- and will make discussion public when proper conclusion has been reached. Now therefore, as it be resolved that November 17, 2022, at the Asbury Park, New Jersey, for purposes outlined below, for litigation, contract matters, and client privileges, and personnel matters. Motion?
I'll move it.
All in favor?
Ladies and gentlemen, the board's gonna be retiring to executive session for approximately 45 minutes or so, after which time the board will return to open session in this room, and the meeting will resume in public approximately 45 minutes, give or take. Thank you.
We're gonna make a motion to come back in public setting. All in favor? Thank you. Row call, please.
Back in session, Ms. Allsby. Ms. Breach. Mr. Grillo. Mr. Lattaraca. Mr. Remy. Ms. Ricks. Mr. Saunders. Ms. Lozinski. Ms. Cook. Thank you.
Okay, the board's gonna go into public participation. In accordance with Board Policy 0167, the Asbury Park Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance, and provides members of the public with the opportunity to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The public comment portion of the meeting is not a question-and-answer session, and all public comments shall be directed to the Board President. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the Board President and provide his or her name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable. All public comments shall be directed to the Board President and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules and/or interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed from the meeting.
At this time, I open up public participation.
Good evening again, Sheila Brazil. I'm here to talk about the school uniforms at the Asbury Park High School. Excuse me. The colors for the pants are khaki. Could we get like maybe that changed to black or khaki? Because a lot of different places use black pants, and black, you know, is is easier to find, and they're a lot cheaper than the khakis. Because when you, you can't always find the khakis in the right size, and when you do find them, it's like really expensive. And then there's a policy that if parents can't afford the uniforms, do you have a form where maybe they can get some help from the district? Thank you, and y'all have a blessed night.
Hello, I'm Tikiya Foster, resident of Asbury Park. I hear, when I come to the board meetings, I hear a lot.
Can you speak up a little bit?
I've been projecting my voice all day. No, okay, I'm stopped. I hear a lot talking about the things that are done for the special needs students here in Asbury Park. They also have the Dream Academy for like the, I guess what you consider the talented and gifted children here in Asbury Park. But if we're speaking realistically, when we come, when we think about most of the students here, or our population here at Asbury Park, most of them have a background where they're not really college-bound. And with not being college-bound and not knowing the alternatives out there, more than likely, they're gonna end up in the same dead-end jobs, repeating the cycle of the community that we currently have, living in Asbury Park. I know that you currently have like a medical program where you have some students who may have like an NHA certification when they leave Asbury Park High School, but I believe it's just like patient care. Have you guys considered looking into other career and technical education programs that can probably foster a career path for the students who are not college-bound here in New Jersey? That way, they actually have a vision or a plan for after they leave high school, instead of turning to the streets, or turning to retail, or fast food. Just an opinion.
Okay. At this time, we'll close public participation.
So to address the two comments, Ms. Brazil, as you know, we have our Student Advisory Committee, and that esteemed lady who's sitting right behind you with the black mask, she sits on that monthly committee with our students, which we've been doing for the last year and a half so far. The color schemes were bought by, were decided by the students. We will revisit that with the current student advisory to give additional options, but that will be something that the students will have a heavily voice in the decision. One of the things that I am trying to develop is student advocacy, as you heard Sarah this evening speak her perspective, vision, opinion on what transpired, and that's what we are aiming to do. She is also a student who sits on the Student Advisory Committee, so she has, you know, great access to voicing her position and the like. So we also provide families the opportunity to fill out a form if they have financial needs. We also, this year, sent about 60 shirts to the high school, as well as to the other buildings to support those students who may not have had those forms completed. Those forms, if you're, if a child is at the high school and needs a shirt, part of the process is go to the office, see someone, they'll support that. So we have been doing that, that is something that we will continue. There are some lessons learned that we will implement next year in terms of when we do the uniforms in the, in the summer. They really are short sleeves, so we're also gonna be looking at winter and fall, you know, late fall, long-sleeve attire as well. But that's gonna be something that we will talk with the students about in terms of, as we expand that opportunity, what do those things look like, and what makes the most sense? So that's on my agenda to discuss with the students, along with a bunch of other student-created activities, such as the SLAP program, S-L-A-P, not literally hitting someone, student leadership at Asbury Park, which was developed by not only Sarah, but also TJ and another high school student in Guadalupe, who are very interested in vetting students to not only help students at the high school in terms of transitioning from 7th and 8th grade, but also underclassmen being mentored by upperclassmen. They've also come with various ideas in order to help the high school students mentor at the other locations in our district, such as the Upper Elementary and the two elementary schools, with our Holiday Bazaar, which they developed and talked about at our Student Advisory Committee meetings. So those are some things that we are presently talking about and actively working on. Another project from our students, which was started by, which was mentioned by student Nathan at the Upper Elementary School about food conservation, given that we're waste, that they believe that we're wasting food in terms of the bag lunches, had to explain to them the federal funds and connected to the bag breakfasts and bag lunches, that we have to account for all of those things. So we, they're coming up with another program, started by a student at the Upper Elementary School, to help us conserve and stay within the guidelines of the federal food regulations and the funding that we get in order to make sure that we're not being wasteful, but also beginning to get those ideas to Sedesco, so we can work collaboratively with them, from the student's perspective, on making sure that their voices are heard and understood, because they've also come up with concerns about the options in terms of lunches and breakfasts and things of that nature, which is a standing item that we talk about monthly. Okay? So, ma'am, the, in terms of the options for students, once we repurpose Obama School, that is something that we will be heavily discussing, that I did talk with board members about when we did the walkthrough at the Obama School for the central office location. So we're presently thinking about and talking about with some local apprentice programs on what usually, excuse me, utilizing some of the space that we have at the Obama School to help support some of those job training initiatives for students that would benefit from that. So that will be one option that we're looking to do. Yes, we're always looking to examine and evaluate our CTE programs, our nursing or our public health program. Right now, it's extremely successful for those students. They're leaving out of here making a decent living wage for 18-year-old student or 18-year-old adult. But those students who graduated last year have other higher aspirations, so it is definitely an entry-level position, just like those other entry-level, whether it's electrician or plumbing. But we will also have to look at retrofitting our own facilities to do that, and in partnership with some of the local unions, to see what they're gonna contribute. So that's not a short-term response, that's really a long-term opportunity that we want to make sure is befitting our students and their interests. But we are looking at that in conjunction with our state-approved CTE programs. So the CTE programs provide a pathway to graduation, which are very clear, and have very demarcated expectations connected to the curriculum and the course sequence. The apprentice program does not necessarily have that, but in partnership with us utilizing that, that space, with the city library having the swing space there and other things, that's gonna be one of the other aspects that we're gonna look to have developed there by the time we move in. But it won't happen simultaneous to the central office move-in. So I want to be really realistic. We need to cut back on some of the funds that we're spending, and moving from the Central Office 910 Fourth Avenue Building into the Obama Building will have a significant financial saving. Not significant in the terms of tens of millions of dollars. I want to be very clear. But significant that we are not leasing a space. That way, we can utilize the Obama space, and we keep our students, who live on that side of town, from it also being caught up in the gentrification on that side of the town. So there are a lot of different moving pieces, but I want to be clear on the intent and purpose on how we plan on utilizing the Obama space in the future. I think I gave a preliminary superintendent's report. I gotta drop the mic a little bit, but just, just a point of personal privilege. Today, we've rather yesterday, at the Bradley, excuse me, at the Thurgood Marshall Elementary School, I had the opportunity to talk with the gentleman of Alpha Phi Alpha, which is one of four historically black fraternities, and makes up the Divine Nine. I think, Mr. Remy, you're a member of one of those organizations, a Kappa Alpha Psi. I'm a member of another, Omega Psi Phi. And we have partnered with these group of black men to come in and volunteer at Thurgood Marshall. Thurgood Marshall was a member of Alpha Phi Alpha, as was Martin Luther King. These gentlemen are volunteering their time. They're gonna do the background checks in order to come in and do a mentoring program. They also want to support our high school students with SAT prep, at no cost to the district. These are utilizing organizations whose creed and call and mission is to uplifting the community. And these are residents of Monmouth County. Some of them have either lived in Asbury Park, raised in Asbury Park, but still live and reside in the Monmouth and Ocean County area. And their duty and charge as part of being in these organizations is community service. And so I wanted to thank them publicly for taking on the charge of volunteering at Thurgood Marshall. I'm a little impartial, being a member of Omega Psi Phi. They are volunteering at Bradley Elementary School and doing some of the same similar programs, free of charge, to the district in mentoring and volunteering at the school. So it is critically important when we talk about organizations that we may not be familiar with, but their intent and purpose and understanding on how they have an impact and what their charge is in terms of volunteering and uplifting the community. So I wanted to just personally recognize two of those organizations that are volunteering and giving back to students that look like them, and these are black men, when people say that they're not visible or active in the community. So I wanted to personally recognize that. Then, as far as my report, I'll move to a consent agenda with the exception of items, all items on B1 through B5, with the exception of nine, until the board is ready to receive that. If, we'll investigate the, that's the M power, as well as the item 11, which is on B5. So I'm omitting B9, excuse me, on page B5, number nine, and number 11. And then all items up through page B6.
Point of clarity, so nine and 11, we're, we're omitting from the consent agenda?
Yes, I'm tabling them.
We're tabling them?
Yes.
Okay.
There was some unreadiness from the curriculum, the CNI Committee. I want to make sure before, although there was a presentation, there's still some information that needs to be provided. I want to make sure that all the information is provided is to clarity, so that the board, when they vote, they're voting with full transparency and understanding. If there is not, then I want to make sure that I table it till that is done.
But can we, can we make sure that with the number nine, that, that we could?
I, I do understand that. Yeah, yeah, I understand that, but that was, as, as the person in charge of that, I'll make sure that that is clear. If it is, at no cost to the district, I'm not understanding a deadline. So there's other clarity that may need to be provided.
We have a motion for all items, B1 through B6, excluding nine and 11.
Second. All in favor?
Questions, comments? So all items.
I have a comment, actually, my comment is to actually thank the folks who are covering, and that is Ms. Waxon, Ms. Hughes, and La Placenta. I want to thank La Placenta, I want to, want to thank them for their service at Asbury Park. And I also would like to thank for, for making our turkeys.
Let's not forget Ms. Corvina Gold.
Yeah, she's on there every year.
Ms. Gold has been with the district for 30 years, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Grillo gives a motion, and then I'll read a resolution after you make the motion.
Okay, but I'm going to read it. I'm making a motion to appoint Patrick J. Madden as special counsel to conduct a personnel investigation at the rate of $115 per hour.
And just so that, for the record, well, I'm sorry, the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Now it's time for discussion. I'll just read into the record the actual resolution, which I'll then provide to Mr. Hastings, so that it could appear in the minutes. Be resolved that the Asbury Park Board of Education retains the services of Patrick J. Madden Esquire as special counsel to conduct an investigation of a personnel matter at the rate of $150 per hour. Business administrator is authorized to take all actions that are necessary in order to effectuate this action of the board. Is there any other questions we can ever roll call?
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Miss Alsby?
Yes.
Miss Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, well, you tell me this every month, I'm sorry, Connie. Thank you.
The main, the...
Okay, thank you. Yeah, y'all can go.